Happy Monday. Good evening. This sixteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by the Reverend Dr. Walter L. Parrish of Northside Baptist Church. Reverend Parrish, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you to Councilman Conway for this honor. Let us pray. Thou in whose image and whose likeness we have been made, we acknowledge with gratitude the gift of this day. Even as seasons change, we are awed by and grateful for the consistency of your presence. We ask, as we gather, that you would allow the people who make up this council and those who are in attendance to feel your presence and your prodding as we all work to make our city a more just and humane place. We ask that you would order today's proceedings so that those who are seeking resolution to problems will find resolution. We ask that you would provide measures of relief for those who are struggling just to make it from one day to the next. We ask that these servants of the people would be endowed with wisdom and possess an intolerance of mediocrity that will allow them to do all they can this day for the least of these. We ask that we would be emancipated from any loyalty to agendas that would divide us but be set free to work for the good of all. We ask that you give our leaders, our council president, and every member of this council, under the sound of my voice, a renewed determination to not be distracted or discouraged. We ask that our city, from the youngest to the oldest, from the richest to the poorest, from the best connected to the least connected, be greater than the individual communities from which we come, and that we might know your guidance, making us one brave and beloved city and community. We ask this in the name of all that is holy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Parrish. Before turning it over to Councilman Blanchard for the Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to recognize the folks from leadership that have joined us. Thank you for being here, as well as the AFL-CIO, as well as every other guest in the chamber. Thank you for joining us tonight. All right. With that, Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker.
Here.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Here.
Schleifer.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Torrance.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Blanchard.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Ramos.
Yeah, here.
Cohen.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum with VP Middleton absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the September twenty-ninth meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes in the desk documents folder.
Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals are adopted. Now we move on to executive nominations. Madam Clerk.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-four Timothy Keen, Director, Department of Planning.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-five Elijah Davis, Jr., Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Investigative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-six Dr. Kevin Daniels, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-seven Dr. Melissa Buckley, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-eight Teresa Bruce, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-six-nine Molly Young, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-zero Corey Weatherspoon, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-one Angie Winder, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-two Farida Wahid, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-three Tika Torres, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-four Jasmine Pope, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-five Dr. Tanya Nichols, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-six Dania Johnson, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-seven Robert Holmes, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-eight Dr. Panagias Galitzatos, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-seven-nine Dr. Andrew Gatis, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-zero Jessica Fontleroy, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-one Tyad Dunn Johnson, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-two Karen Dehoff, Member, Trauma-Informed Care Task Force.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations, and I promise, for those joining us for the first time, it will be less repetitive from here on out. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-two Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority, for the purpose of renewing and continuing the Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the activities and authority of the Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority. Lead sponsor Ramos Jones, co-sponsor Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This is the required reauthorization of the Charles Village Community Benefits District. This has to happen every four years for the public to be able to have a hearing about what's happening in the Benefits District, but also for us to celebrate the successes. The Benefits District, Charles Village Benefits District was the very first Benefits District, Community Benefits District, in Baltimore City, and grateful to be, have been involved from the very beginning of this, of their work. And they're designed to, all Benefits Districts are designed to create, to allow for more safety and cleanliness in that community, and they are, the property owners are assessed a special tax in order to pay for that. So this reauthorization is extremely important to continue the conversation around the, the performance of the organization, but also the fact that we do still need these organizations in these communities. So excited to work with my colleague on this bill and look forward to the next steps. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. This bill has been assigned to the, Councilman Jones, do you want to speak to this bill as well, or are you good? This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-three Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, one-two-two-four West Lafayette Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit into three dwelling units on the property known as one-two-two-four West Lafayette Avenue, block zero-zero-seven-eight, lot zero-zero-five, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-four Sale of Property, twenty-four-oh-five Linden Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell, either at public or private sale, all its interest in certain property located at twenty-four-oh-five Linden Avenue, block thirty-four-sixty-three-A, lot zero-zero-eight-A, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the Office of the Comp Troller.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-five Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, twelve million nine hundred eleven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of twelve million nine hundred eleven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars to Baltimore City Public Schools, service three fifty-two, Baltimore City Public Schools, to provide funding for a deficit caused by the city's contribution to the development agreement for City Springs Elementary Middle School, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-six Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, thirty-eight million five hundred twenty thousand ninety-three dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of thirty-eight million five hundred twenty thousand ninety-three dollars to the Fire Department, service six zero-two, fire suppression and emergency rescue, to provide funding to balance the Fire Department's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget to cover a deficit caused by overtime, staffing costs, and contractual EMS services, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, city council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-seven Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, eighty-one thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of eighty-one thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars to the Department of Law, service eight-six-two, transactions, to provide funding to balance the Department of Law's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget to cover a deficit caused by contractual spending and providing for a special effective date. Council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-eight Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor License Board, four hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred fifteen dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of four hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred fifteen dollars to the Liquor License Board, service eight-five-one, liquor license compliance, to provide funding to balance the Liquor License Board's fiscal twenty-twenty-five budget for a deficit caused by office lease costs, use of privately leased vehicles, and overtime, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-zero-nine Supplementary Special Grant Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, three hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary special grant fund operating appropriation in the amount of three hundred dollars to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, service seven-nine-five workforce services for Baltimore residents, to provide funding to support the creation of recovery-friendly workplaces and care navigators, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, city council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-one-zero Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, forty-seven million four hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of forty-seven million four hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars to the Police Department, service six-two-two, police patrol, to provide funding to balance the Police Department's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget for a deficit caused by overtime and staffing costs, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-one-one Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks, five million six hundred thirty thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of five million six hundred thirty thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars to the Department of Recreation and Parks, service six-five-four, urban forestry, to provide funding to balance the Department of Recreation Parks fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget for a deficit caused by overtime and unbudgeted contractual costs, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-one-two Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Sheriff's Office, three million four hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of three million four hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars to the Sheriff's Office, service eight-eight-two, Deputy Sheriff Enforcement, to provide funding to balance the Sheriff's Office budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five for a deficit caused by overtime, fleet costs, and various contractual and supply spending, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-one-one-three Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, four million four hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation, the amount of four million four hundred fifty-seven five hundred eighty dollars to the Department of Transportation, service six-eight-eight, snow and ice control, to provide funding to balance the Department of Transportation's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget for a deficit caused by snow removal costs, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the city council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-R Workers' Rights in Baltimore City, for the purpose of recognizing key rights of workers across Baltimore City. Lead sponsors, Cohen Jones. Co-sponsors, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Ramos.
Colleagues, in this moment of national discord and division, the city council and our partners in labor will make Baltimore the best city in America for working people. I thank Chairman Jones and President Courtney Jenkins and the members of the AFL-CIO for their partnership in this effort. Baltimoreans deserve to know that when they leave for work in the morning, they'll come back home at night without risking life and limb. And that holds particularly true for our public servants, like our sanitation workers who are out there every day cleaning up our trash. Baltimoreans deserve to know that their wages will not be stolen, that they will be paid on time, and that we will go after the bad actors who take advantage of vulnerable people. Baltimoreans deserve to know that we are using our precious tax dollars to support responsible, upstanding contractors who provide the best value for our money, who don't incur constant cost overruns, and who do not exploit their workers. Baltimoreans deserve the right to organize, because we know that the only thing better than a good job is a good union job. And Baltimoreans deserve to know that their city council is laser-focused on affordability. Together, we're proving that we can be pro-business and pro-worker. In fact, you can't have one without the other. And we're proving that when we fight and when we unite with working people, we win. In the months ahead, we will unveil a series of bills focused on making this resolution a reality for workers in our city. Before we vote, I want to turn the mic over to our Labor and Workforce Chair, Councilman Jermaine Jones. Folks, do not mistake his quiet, easygoing energy for timidity. The man is focused, and he is fierce. I could not ask for a better partner to lead this effort. Councilman Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I rise to introduce this Workers' Rights Resolution because the reality for too many people in Baltimore is that hard work is no longer enough to survive. Every day, across the city and across the country, people are working two, even three jobs just to keep up with rent, groceries, and utilities, and many still don't have access to basic health care. Too many parents are spending more time trying to piece together income than spending time raising their own children. And when it comes to workplace protection and dignity, it often feels like we've moved backwards and not forward. A worker should not have to choose between paying the bills and protecting their health. They should not have to sacrifice their bodies to the job or gamble with safety because productivity is valued over human life. Baltimore's laws already say, no one should be forced to live below a minimum standard of decent living. And this resolution simply calls on us to finally live up to that promise and to say clearly that the people who carry this city on their backs deserve more than survival. They deserve stability, they deserve respect, and they deserve security. This Workers' Bill of Rights is not symbolic, it's a declaration that in Baltimore, dignity for working people is not negotiable. So I urge my colleagues to stand with me and to stand with working families who keep Baltimore alive every single day. Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules three dash seven for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the resolution be adopted.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-five-R Informational Hearing, Safekeeping and Storage of Baltimore City Wills. For the purpose of inviting the Register of Wills, the Clerk of the Circuit Court for Baltimore City, the Chief Judge of the Circuit Court for Baltimore City, the Director of the Department of General Services, and the City Administrator to appear before the city council to discuss the current space allocated to store wills in the Clarence J. Mitchell, Jr. courthouse, the lack of fire and flood protection in said storage space, and the need to digitize and protect the one hundred years of wills being stored in a room in the aging courthouse. Lead sponsor, Schleifer. Co-sponsors, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a recent stroll over to the courthouse and looking through the different offices there, came across a very interesting one, the Register of the Wills office. And anybody who goes over there, you'll find just walls covered with, with wills. And each one of these wills is an individual in Baltimore's last will and testament. And these wills both delegate assets as well as reveal everything that that deceased has and who it should go to. And without that, there's a lot of issues that would come from that, whether it be families fighting and other related asset issues, as well as property-related issues in the city. And we know that our courthouse is over a hundred and twenty-five years old, and properties like the aging courthouse are prone to floods, leaks, electrical fires, and other, other related hazards. And God forbid that should happen in our courthouse, a hundred years' worth of wills, and hundreds of thousands of people would be impacted by such a catastrophe. And so it's important that, that we as city leaders take immediate action, both in the short term as well as the long term. The long term, obviously, being that these should not be only on paper, they should all be digital, digitized and scanned, that's pretty basic. But on the short term, we need to protect the wills that are there, making sure they're in waterproof as well as fireproof storage containers, essentially. And so we'll be hosting this hearing, and I thank all the co-sponsors, and I thank the Register of the Wills and everybody else who will be participating in that hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. This resolution has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Please note, Councilman Torrance as co-sponsor, Councilman Glover as well.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-six-R Informational Hearing, Human Trafficking Investigations and Prosecutions. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Office of the State's Attorney, the Baltimore City Police Department, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore City Public School System Police, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative co-chairs, and all subcommittee chairs, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Homeland Security Investigations, the Maryland State Police, the Maryland United States Attorney's Office, the Maryland Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Hope Center formerly known as Baltimore Child Abuse Center, Blue Dot, and other collaborators from the Baltimore Human Trafficking Collaborative who provide victims of human trafficking with emergency interventions and support services to brief the city council on the scope of the human trafficking problem in Baltimore City, current efforts to investigate and prosecute perpetrators of human trafficking, further strategies that could be implemented to bring these individuals to justice, and resources that are needed to assist survivors of human trafficking. Lead sponsor, Porter. Co-sponsors, Parker, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, and I thank you to my colleagues for your attention today. Today I'm introducing a resolution calling for the informational hearing on human trafficking investigations and prosecutions in Baltimore City. This hearing will bring together the many members of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative and our law enforcement, state, federal, nonprofit partners to brief the council on the scope of the problem, the progress that has been made, and the resources needed to better protect our residents. Human trafficking is one of the most devastating crimes taking place in our city and across Maryland. Our state's central location with major highways, ports, and transit systems makes Baltimore particularly vulnerable as a corridor for human traffickers. Victims are often hidden in plain sight, and they are exploited, isolated, and silenced. I also want to take a moment to recognize former Councilman, former Councilman Chris Burnett, who fought for years and was a champion in this fight and helped build the foundation of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. Councilwoman Burnett's vision brought together government agencies, law enforcement, advocates, and service providers under one roof, working in partnership rather than in isolation. Today, as Chair of the Collaborative, I am proud to continue elevating this important work to protect survivors and hold traffickers accountable. This hearing will invite testimony from our partners, including the State's Attorney's Office, the Baltimore Police Department, Fire Department, School Police, Sheriff's Department, the FBI, Homeland Security and Investigations, Maryland State Police, and service providers alike. Together, we will help, they will help us understand the current landscape, how cases are being identified and investigated, how prosecutions are proceeding, what prevention strategies are working, and what supports are available and or still lacking for survivors. Baltimore has a responsibility to ensure that every survivor of human trafficking receives the protection, care, and justice they deserve. Though this hearing, through this hearing, we will reaffirm our commitment to end human trafficking in all of its forms, ensuring that every agency and partner in this city is working together to make it happen. I look forward to the discussion and to continuing to strengthen Baltimore's leadership in combating human trafficking, a legacy built on collaboration, compassion, and action.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. This resolution has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills and executive appointments on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting this evening.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will proceed with reading short titles. We begin with an executive nomination from the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Madam Clerk.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-three-nine Catalina Rodriguez Lima, Director, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs.
Chair recognizes Chair Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on Thursday, October sixteenth, and the committee recommends a favorable nomination.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. Is there any debate or discussion on this nomination? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor of confirming this nominee say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. This nomination is confirmed. We now move to bills from the Housing and Economic Development Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-three Zoning Administrator Transfer to the Department of Planning.
Chair recognizes Chair Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill Twenty-five zero-six-three Zoning Administrator Transfer to Department of Planning, sponsored by Vice President Middleton. This bill was heard on September thirtieth. It was recommended with favorable amendments. Mr. President, there were committee amendments on my colleagues' desks. The amendments require that the Civil Service Commission to give the council reasonable notice if the zoning administrator was to be reclassified out of the, out of civil service. Mr. President, I offer this amendment because of two things. One is that the zoning administrative position is very important to this council, but also I, I wholeheartedly believe in the practices of zoning in this, in this city have been discriminatory to people of color. So for the one person who gets to offer an opinion about zoning in this city, I just want to make sure that this council is given adequate notice when they are put into that role position. This position is civil service currently, and we know politics can happen, and I just want to make sure that person is protected and that this council puts that protection in place.
With that being said, I move the amendment, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Is there any debate or discussion on these amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Chair Torrance.
Mr. President, I move the bill as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move to bills from Land Use and Transportation Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 25-0040, zoning uses retail, small box establishment.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use and Transportation Committee heard this bill on October 16th. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. Mr. President, there are committee amendments in with the desk documents. The first amendment, therefore, clarifies the purpose statement in the authorizing legislation. Amendment two clarifies the type of goods sold at the small box store. Amendment three clarifies terms in the bill such as store and fuel station. And amendment four strikes a section on non-conforming uses. It is my understanding that all these amendments came at the recommendation of the City Law Department and better the bill. In that respect, Mr. President, I move the amendments.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion passes, the amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Try that again. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Please note Councilmember Schleifer as a nay.
City Council Bill 25-0064, zoning, bulk and yard requirements amendments.
The Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on October 16th. It was recommended as favorable with amendment. Mr. President, there are amendments on my colleagues' desks. The first amendment from Councilmember Gray, the sponsor of the bill, which I can also note was done in collaboration with Councilman Parker. Thank you for your contribution. Requires that buildings taller than 35 feet, up to 45 feet, either adjoining a street right-of-way that is at least 40 feet wide in the case of an interior lot or for corner lots. Each of the adjoining streets must be 40 feet wide. This is an increase from the existing standard that's comparable, that says 30 feet presently. Amendment two from Councilmember Middleton strikes Vice President from the list of co-sponsors. Amendment three from the Planning Department are technical to correct typos in a table. Amendment four from Councilman Parker would increase the minimum rear yard in the R8 zoning district from 12 feet as proposed to 16 feet with the amendment. And Amendment five from me would update the minimum lot area for age-restricted multifamily dwellings to be comparable with other multifamily dwelling use. And Amendment six from the zoning board are additional technical amendments to fix typos in the bill. Mr. President, I move all of the committee amendments.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? I see Councilmember Schleifer.
President, can we just get some clarity on this 40-feet-wide street thing? Because everything else this council's been proposing has been about making streets thinner and, you know, and different uses of. So the fact that the street's got to be 40 feet wide, can we just get some clarity and explanation as to why that would be required?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey?
Yes, thank you. The zoning code today says that you can exceed the standard of 35 feet in building height to go up to 45 feet if the house is on a street that is 30 feet or greater in width. And what this does actually says is that some streets are very small, but may have just 30 feet, but would have kind of an inappropriate kind of character to them if the houses were exceptionally tall. And so it changes this standard so that you can't go to that 45-foot height unless the street in front of it is at least 40 feet wide, rather than being limited, being permissive at only 30 feet. Does that help me clarify?
Great. Other discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. I hear nays from Councilmember Schleifer and Glover. This bill, this motion passes and the amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I've been trying to look at this bill and I appreciate the intention of the sponsor. But I have some concerns about the impact that the bill would have across the city. I understand we want to build more housing and expand more housing. I don't think that this necessarily does that. It expands housing in areas where we certainly want to see more people. But I think if we want to bring more people into the city, we need to work in the areas where we don't currently have development. I think what we'll find is as people begin to make changes on their homes over time, it's going to cause inconveniences and challenges for folks in those neighborhoods, from a view shed, from a shadow perspective, from a convenience perspective in many neighborhoods across the city. And I think one of the other major considerations here is that while this effort is written across the city, it won't affect all neighborhoods the same way. We know that neighborhoods that have covenants are able to prevent this from moving forward in those respective neighborhoods. So it just doesn't, it doesn't quite do all the things we want it to do, and I think it may cause some complications if we move forward with it. This is a sweeping effort across the entire city that has many, many ramifications. And for that reason, I have deep concerns about moving forward on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. Other debate discussion, Councilmember Torrance?
Well, Mr. President, I wouldn't believe I would be agreeing with Councilman Conway tonight. But I get the thought, the intent. I appreciate the councilman's introduction of the bill. I work for people in West Baltimore, and I love Paris, Gray, and I'm just going to be transparent. But tonight I have to vote on behalf of my residents, so I will be voting no, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Hearing and seeing no further debate, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Rule call.
Parker. McCray.
Please. You're right. Apologies, Councilmember McCray.
No problem. If we could register my vote as a no.
Yep.
Thank you.
And please return to Councilmember McCray after we get done with the vote.
Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. Eight in the affirmative and 1, 2, 3, 4 in the negative. I return to Councilmember McCray to explain her vote. And this bill will pass. Sorry, 5 in the negative, I think 8 in the affirmative. Nine?
Yeah, just so you know.
All right. Nine in the affirmative, the bill passed. Nine in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. 1, 2. Math was not my strong suit. Shmoa, recount real quick.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton is absent. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye.
All right. That is 5 in the negative and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 in the affirmative.
9 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative. This bill passes. Councilmember McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief, everybody. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record. For my district, I voted no on this bill because I believe there are environmental impacts from increasing lot sizes, and there were community concerns within my district. Every community has their own culture. Every community is unique. And I think that we need to make sure that we're also paying attention to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember McCray.
City Council Bill 25-0065, zoning, eliminating off-street parking requirements.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on October 16th. It was recommended as favorable with an amendment. The amendment is included in the desk documents. My colleagues, the amendment brought by the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Blanchard, clarifies exceptions to the parking maximums in the cases of detached or semi-detached dwellings where no maximum allowable amount of parking exists, or a structure or land that has changed to a new use, which can exceed the permitted maximum if the prior use had a higher maximum. It also clarifies that the ordinance does not apply to off-street parking facilities as a part of the parking maximum. Just as a refresher, the bill recognizes that today there is a table listing out numerically, mathematically, by formulas, the parking minimum that is required. And there is a provision in the zoning code that, in the text of the code, that says that there are parking maximums that exist today throughout the city and while, but that it is twice that parking minimum that is in the code, in the table, rather. And so the bill carries forth the existing parking maximum today. It just maintains that status quo. And these amendments make sure that if there are properties that were built before, say, those parking maximums ever existed, that those properties can continue to exceed the parking maximum. Even if those properties change hands or change uses, that existing parking maximum can remain. Somebody doesn't have to take away parking spaces just because a property changed owners or occupants. So with that, Mr. President, I move the amendment as favorable.
Before we vote on this amendment, is there any debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Rule call.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway. Schleifer. Middleton is absent. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye.
9 in the affirmative, 5 in the negative.
With 9 in the affirmative and 5 in the negative, this amendment passes. Councilmember Dorsey?
This time I move the bill favorable as amended.
I believe there is a floor amendment. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a person who firmly believes in representing my community, I must offer these amendments. While I respect the author of the actual bill's intent, as a person who represents a black butterfly, it is absolutely a no for me. The amendments that I offer tonight will put where everyone has been saying to muster. This bill has no writing about affordable housing. So amendment number 1 will require that if you want to have the parking minimum removed, you actually have to have 60% AMI. I'm very strong about that, but also it allows us to exempt clinics as well as residential care facilities, as well as the Black Arts Entertainment District. I offer this amendment because I have someone who's using a predatory business on the Pennsylvania Avenue who has a methadone clinic, who says if this bill passes, he can open up 2 more facilities in my district. Too far have black people been given things and given things and given things because of zoning does not have a racially progressive stance in terms of identifying that my brown skin matters, my property value matters. So, Mr. President, I offer amendment number 1 for that reason. In addition to that, for my residents who live in Bolton Hill and other neighborhoods who are dealing with curb congestion, it gives us an opportunity for parking authorities to say that we've seen curb congestion. We may actually have to add a parking garage in a neighborhood to actually remove those minimums and the maximums to address the needs in those individual communities. I think that this is the easiest way to address the bill without harming unintended consequences for black and brown neighborhoods. So with that, Mr. President, I move amendment number 1.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the floor amendment? I see Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Torrance, for bringing this before us. I just had a question. I know Amendment 1 has a lot of different pieces to it. Would you be so good, only because I work really closely with arts and entertainment districts, would you explain the, just spell out the one per ten person, five red caps? Just break that down for us. I want to make sure I understand what you're proposing there in terms of what the requirement would be for public assembly-related items?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Parker. So right now, as we're building more entertainment space on Pennsylvania Avenue, we have adequate parking because of we have the minimums up 10, right? As we're thinking about it, I've had 2 methadone clinics opening up in the district, one at the Bank of America and the other at a former actual pharmacy because of the zoning requirements. They're exempt because they have no parking minimums, because of what they are and because of their classification. This bill will open up the floodgates to increase the number of actual facilities on the Black Arts and Entertainment District. I do not want to wake up after we've made a concerted effort to add black voices and black artists an actual space in our district to actually be exacerbated and destroyed by the intent a person is willing to make millions of dollars off of an epidemic that we're trying to solve today.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Any further debate or discussion on the floor amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the floor amendments say aye. Rule call.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton is absent. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
No.
That would be 9 to 5.
With 5 in the affirmative and 9 in the negative, these floor amendments do not move. Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any further debate or discussion on this bill as amended? Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, too, I think, is a really interesting bill. I actually do like the idea here. I think in efforts where we are doing sweeping change across the whole city, we have to be very, very, very thoughtful and careful. I fear that we're going to find ourselves in sticky situations in different neighborhoods, depending on what's going on in those respective neighborhoods. And I think there is a way to do this. I think there's a bit of the cart before the horse or cart and the horse working together, and that is transit. If we don't have sufficient transit and we pull away parking in certain neighborhoods, you're going to have people having to walk multiple blocks to get home. In some of those neighborhoods, maybe they don't feel totally safe doing so, or maybe those folks are not capable of doing so because of their age or other infirmities. So I think, yeah, in order to do this the right way, I think we need to be also talking about a way to improve transit, make it more reliable, make it more robust, make it come into some of these middle neighborhoods and black neighborhoods that don't have robust and reliable transit today. That looks like doing some of the, you know, the red line. It looks like having a north-south line that, you know, we did a big study going through my district, through Councilwoman Ramos's district as well, that has now stalled. I think we need to find a way to fund these efforts. I think we need to find a way to fund these efforts, and generally, we find these, these fundings through state, state dollars. And we just had the roadshow where this council advocated heavily for that, but we know that our state is, is really struggling fiscally right now, so they don't really have the means. And the other way we do this is we go to the federal government, and we rely on big, big federal dollars in order to see this through, but we know that that is not going to happen anytime soon. So, I'm, I'm uncomfortable going a full yes on this. I do have reservations on the bill, but I do like the idea and really thank the sponsor for, one, bringing it forward and advocating very heavily for it, but I do have some concerns about it, and it's something that I think we can work towards resolving, but that, that's sort of where I stand right now.
Understood. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to read this statement because I want to make clear my true thoughts in the entire package. Baltimore's housing history is inseparable from the history of structural racism in America. From redlining to racially restricted covenants to decades of disinvestment, our city's built environment was designed to separate opportunity for Black and Brown families, concentrate poverty in certain neighborhoods. So, we walk up, we talk about modernizing our zoning and expanding our housing choices, we must ask deeper questions. Who will this policy truly benefit, and who will leave it behind? The Housing Options and Opportunity Act and its companion reforms promise to expand the supply, but without guardrails. These changes risk doing unintended consequences and harm, particularly to Black and Brown communities that have already endured decades of inequitable land use and concentrated burden. This is why I introduced my floor amendments, to make this bill more equitable, but also accountable to our residents. Together, these amendments sought to balance encouraging flexibility while protecting communities from unintended consequences and deregulation. Unfortunately, they were not adopted. Without these safeguards, this risks deepening inequities. By repealing key protections, it opens the door for unattended and predatory land uses such as poorly managed recovery homes, substandard care facilities, and other nuisance operations to cluster in Black and Brown neighborhoods, already struggling to recover from decades of disinvestment. We've seen the story before. In Harlem, redevelopment and upzoning without adequate protections led to cultural displacement, erasing the very community that gave neighborhoods its identity and resilience. In Washington, D.C., rapid development and rezoning spurred the accidents of Black families, and even new luxury apartments rose in their place. In Bed-Stuy, market-driven housing growth without anti-displacement safeguards resulted in longtime residents being displaced and not supported. Simply, supply does not mean that Black people will be around. Baltimore cannot afford to repeat those mistakes. Equity requires intention, policy ignores historic harms, only reproduce in new forms that harm. Ending structural racism requires more than just race-neutral force. It demands the surgical precision of a scalpel guided by equity. When these bills were introduced in this council, a staff person made a comment that these were thinking about those to come and not those who are here. Let me repeat, for those to come and not those who are here. To my residents in San-Taoisester, I rise and I say this, we want to own land, we no longer want to rent it. To our residents who have, and I mean the Black women in West Baltimore, who've held up this tax base when white people left, they want to enjoy the equity that we're building in the city, but not be displaced by high taxes or displaced by inconsistent policies that don't see them. Our residents deserved, and I mean our residents, that sixty-six percent of the Black people in this city need to be put at the forefront of every policy we put before this council. Redlining started in this community and we're just furthering it. And I say that wholeheartedly as someone who's seen family members displaced in D.C., who's seen people displaced in Bed-Stuy. The homeownership rate for Black people fell from seventy-one percent to forty-four percent in ten years in Bed-Stuy, New York. In the District Columbia, it is no longer Chocolate City. We displaced Black people. It's to the point where our neighbors in D.C., who I love, one of my friends serves in that council, they had to force people to take section eight vouchers for people who are making eighty thousand dollars a year. Supply does not mean that affordability will be there. We had no guardrails in place. So, when Black people leave this city, I want to make sure on this council record that I told you so. And if you want to make sure they stay here, put them at the forefront, not give us lip service and say affordability. Affordability is writing it in the law. For these reasons, despite my good faith effort to strengthen and balance this legislation, I will be voting no. We need zoning that is not just flexible, but fair. Investment that is not just new, but just. And legislation that centers voices and rights of residents who built and sustained our neighborhoods. Black and Brown families whose generations of care deserve protection, not more harmful disgrace in disguise as progress.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Any further debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Roll call.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton is absent. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes.
That would be eight to six.
With eight in the affirmative and six in the negative, this bill, this bill is, will move to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilmember? Chair Dorsey. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. Back to the clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zeros.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies.
Sorry.
Councilmember McCray, explain her vote.
I appreciate you. I'm going to be brief. Again, I just want to make sure that I'm explaining my vote for the record for my own constituents. I voted no because of the day-to-day burdens that this is going to place on my residents, not just my residents, but also other neighborhoods across this city who are within middle neighborhoods that I speak about often. How, just to Councilman Torrance's point, how are we going to continue to retain our legacy residents? Many who are Black, they are the ones that I am losing within my district. And that's what I'm thinking about every time we have to vote on bills like these. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair McCray.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight-two, Planned Unit Development Amendment Under Armour Headquarters.
Chair recognizes Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on October sixteenth. It was recommended as favorable with an amendment. The amendment, the two amendments, the amendments are on my colleague's desk, they're documents. The first amendment clarifies and renumbers Section One of the purpose statement to clarify that the mayor and city council approve the amendment to the PUD. Amendment Two clarifies the area where vehicular access will be prohibited in the PUD. There's a element of it that basically says, on this map, in this area, the development can't create vehicle access to the property at this spot here. And these amendments come through a collaborative effort between the bill, Councilman Blanchard, the representative of the bill, the property owner, and the Locust Point neighbors who are around it. With that, Mr. President, I move the amendments favorable.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, there are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
Any debate or discussion on finding of facts? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on this bill as amended? Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilperson Blanchard, for bringing this forward. We had a good conversation twice, actually, over in, in our committee about the matter. I think the one thing I just want to lift up here, and partly it's because I, it came up in conversation with the prospective planning director earlier today, just the reality of, we've spent a lot of time here talking about the movement of young people to schools, public or otherwise, in the city. Carissa Ray, in particular, serves a community of folks that are heavily dependent upon public transit, many of whom live in my district, as well as Councilperson Glover and Councilperson Jones's district. And the current site is relatively convenient for them to get to, both by bus and by walk and biking. Locust Point, being on a peninsula, is, is a hard place to reach, but we do have a particular tool to do that, being a Harper Circulator, and so just want to lift up for this council's consideration and for the administration's consideration that as we see the relocation of this high school there, and as we're attentive to the movement of all of our students to their, their schools, that further investment consideration of using that resource to help facilitate transportation there to Hall Street Pier would be, would be a good thing to make sure our young people can get to school on time and effectively. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you, Councilman Parker. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of this, of approving this bill say aye. All those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move on to bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero one-eight, Emergency Scene Unauthorized Persons Prohibited. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero six-two, Building Code, Single Exit From Residential Occupancy. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero seven-two, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Units to Two Dwelling Units Each in the R8 Zoning District, seventeen oh three and seventeen oh nine Edmondson Avenue. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero seven-seven, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 Zoning District, Variance's five four one Lafayette Avenue. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero seven-eight, City Streets Closing, Portions of Certain Streets and Alley's Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, and the Land of National Railroad Passenger Company Amtrak. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero seven-nine, Sale of Property, Certain Streets Lying Within the Area Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Pacon Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the Land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation Amtrak. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight-three, RPP, Area Thirty, Exception Fifteen, East West Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight-four, City Streets Closing, A Six-Foot Portion of West Saratoga Street and an Alley ten point six seven feet wide bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight-five, Sale of Property, Section of West Saratoga Street Bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight-six, City Streets Closing, A Portion of North Chapel Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero nine-two, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion to a Banquet Hall in the C2 Zoning District, Variance, eleven twenty-three, West Baltimore Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November the fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chambers on two-five dash zero zero nine-nine, Supplementary Municipal Telephone Exchange Fund Operating Appropriation, Municipal Telephone Exchange Service one-three-three, Telecommunications for one million, four hundred thousand dollars. And, Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
So moved? Without objection? Hearing and seeing none, the rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November the fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chambers on two-five dash zero one zero five, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, twelve million, nine hundred, eleven thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three again in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objection, the rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chambers on two-five dash zero one zero six, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, thirty-eight million dollars, thirty-eight million, five hundred, twenty thousand, ninety-three dollars. And, Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three again in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chambers on two-five dash zero one zero seven, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, eighty-one thousand, three hundred, ninety-three dollars. Mr. President, again, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objection, the rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council's Chamber on two-five dash zero one zero eight, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor License Board, four hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Mr. President, again, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chambers on two-five dash zero one zero nine, Supplementary New Grant Funding, excuse me, Grant Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. President, again, I would like to suspend Rule ten-three in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
Thanks again, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council's Chamber on two-five dash zero one one zero, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, forty-seven million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred, eighty-nine dollars. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three again in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chamber on two-five dash zero one one one. Okay, on two-five dash zero one one one, Supplementary Regional Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks, five million, six hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred seventy-six. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule ten-three again in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than thirty days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in the Clarence D. Burns Council Chamber on two-five dash zero zero one-two, Supplementary Regional Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation Sheriff's Office $3,425,454. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rule 10-3 again in order to announce the hearing that we are scheduling less than 30 days after its introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule will be suspended.
And last, um, the Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 At 9:00 a.m. In The Clarence D. Burns Council Chamber On 25-0013 Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriations Department Of Transportation $4,457,580. And Mr. President, um, again, I would like to suspend Rule 10-3 in order to just announce that hearing that we're scheduling less than 30 days after this introduction to the council.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule is suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chair Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be having a hearing for, um, Bill Number 250031R, informational hearing for middle school, uh, sports at the request of Councilmember Zach Blanchard. That will be on Thursday, the 13th of November at 12:30 p.m. Please note that hearing will be held at Digital Harbor High School. Also, um, the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be having a hearing in, um, December on the 11th, on a Thursday at 12:00 p.m. And that is, uh, for Bill 250100, Children and Youth Fund Updates. And that will be at 12:00 p.m. Here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Housing and Economic Development, Chair Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee will be meeting on November 4th for City Council Bill 250088, Tax, Property Tax Sale, Vacant Lots And Vacant Structures. And then on that same day, we will be meeting for 20, Council Bill 250080 End Room Foreclosure, Vacant Structures, And Nuisance Properties. And these will both be at 5:15 p.m. On November 4th. Um, also, I will be rescheduling LO 250018 Home Services from, um, October 28th to be rescheduled to October, to November 4th at 5:15 p.m. And then I will, for the sake of everyone not having to deal with council work close to Christmas, will be rescheduling the accuracy of VBNs and non-antiquities TIF, uh, which is LO 250027 from December 23rd to a later date. Cause you know, I like to let people to enjoy their holiday. Um, and that will be announced at a later date, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Torrance. Labor and Workforce, Chair Jones.
Mr. President. Uh, the Labor Workforce Committee has a scheduling update for Bill Number LO 250035, Baltimore City Works. Uh, this hearing was originally scheduled for October 29th, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. And is now postponed until further notice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Land Use And Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use And Transportation Committee will continue its oversight efforts, returning to the topics of street lighting, parking enforcement, and community engagement all on December 11th. I'm announcing this way out in advance because we fully intend to give the Department of Transportation every opportunity to put their absolute best foot forward. And we will meet with them in advance of this, uh, to be as, uh, to continue as, in as collaborative, uh, way as possible. Uh, again, that will be on December 11th at 9:00 a.m. Before we get to December 11th, however, the Land Use And Transportation Committee will hear Council Bill 250055, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot Principal Use Variances 701 Mura Street At 9:00 a.m. On November 20th. Committee will hear 250056, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot Principal Use Variances 702 Mura Street, November 20th, 9:00 a.m. Will hear Council Bill 250071, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of Single Family Dwelling Unit To Two Dwelling Units In The R8 Zoning District, Variance 15 East West Street At 9:00 a.m. On November 20th. We will hear Council Bill 250090, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling To Two Dwelling Units In The R7 Zoning District, Variance 220 North Culver Street At 9:00 a.m. On November 20th. We will hear 250091, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling To Four Dwelling Units In The R8 Zoning District, Variance 1425 West Fayette Street At 9:00 a.m., November 20th. We will hear Council Bill 250066, Zoning Housing Options And Opportunity At 9:00 a.m. On November 13th And on November 20th, following the hearing of the five zoning bills that I have just, uh, announced. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on LO 25-0037 Opioid Epidemic Response On December 11th, uh, 2025 At 4:30 p.m. This is in response to, uh, the Health Commissioner's nomination hearing where she said that she will come back and present answers to our questions, uh, from her, uh, from her initial hearing, uh, in three months from now. And so three months will be December 11th, um, and we'll have that follow-up hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Schleifer. Public Health And Environment, Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The Public Health And Environment Committee will reconvene the hearing for the following council resolutions on Wednesday, December 3rd, beginning at 10:00 a.m. 25-0015R, informational hearing, well-being of the transgender community in Baltimore. 25-0020R, informational hearing, well-being of gay men in Baltimore. And 25-0021R, informational hearing on the well-being of lesbian women in Baltimore. And this is in culmination for HIV Awareness Month for December.
Thank you, Chair Porter. Public Safety, Chair Conway. No announcements. Finally, I would like to announce the creation of a Charter Review Special Committee chaired by Councilman Dorsey. Members can find more info on the printed documents on each of your desks. Uh, Mr. Chair, please, please proceed with your announcements for this new committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, I just want to say, uh, it's a real honor to get the opportunity to chair this committee uh, and to work with my colleagues on, uh, matters pertaining to the charter, our foundational document. Um, I am, uh, frequently having to reference the charter in the short, in the course of doing the work that I've had the privilege to do here for now two full terms and now into my third term. And, uh, I think it's really important that the city council take very seriously matters pertaining to the charter and to look at it in a comprehensive manner. Uh, so I want to thank you, Mr. President, for creating this committee and for giving me the opportunity and the honor of chairing this committee. Um, also looking forward to the work, uh, with my vice chair, Councilman Bullock, and the other members of the committee. This committee will be for the purpose of considering proposals to revise the city charter and to recommend ultimately bills, multiple bills to, uh, revise the city charter to the full city council. I want to announce, uh, kind of a bunch of hearings. Um, these are all right, the time, at, at this time falling under the category of legislative oversight, uh, LO 250038. Um, but I think at some point in the course of going through this, we're going to end up with some bills that we want to consider and vote. So some additional hearings will have to be called, uh, specifically as bill hearings when those matters, uh, come, uh, to introduction. Also, before I do this, I'll just also note that, um, I had an email scheduled to go out to all the members here, uh, during the meeting this evening. You all have in your inbox, um, a document that was, uh, sent to me by Hillary Rulie from the Law Department that combined, it's 200 some pages. A lot of it is actually bills that were drafted in the past. Um, but, uh, it is a fairly comprehensive, uh, uh, compilation of documents from many charter review commissions that have occurred over many decades in the city. There is one document in particular in there from Vic Turvila, who's a former city law department, uh, employee and who is an expert not just on Baltimore City's charter, but on charters in the state of Maryland in general. And he brings 30 years of experience advising counties in the state of Maryland on how to write and revise charters. There's a 12-page document in that packet, pages 17 through 29, written by Vic, that gives a wonderful and simple foundational understanding of what is the charter and what belongs in a charter and what doesn't belong in a charter and how it can be challenging to change a charter when it has things already in it that don't belong in it. I really strongly encourage every member of the council to, to give a look over Vic's document in that package that is attached to the email in your inboxes. Um, with that, uh, the Charter Review Special Committee will hold its first hearing here in the Duvern Chamber, Chamber On November 5th, 2025 At 4:00 p.m. It will hold its second hearing here on November 9th At 4:00 p.m. It will hold third hearing, December 3rd At 5:30 p.m. It will hold a hearing January 21st, 5:30 p.m. It will hold a hearing on February 4th, 5:30 p.m. It will hold a hearing February 18th. I'm sorry, the second one, I said the ninth, I meant my 19th. Um, there, not nine, uh, not November 9th, November 19th At 4:00 p.m. Uh, where was I? January 21st, 5:30 p.m. February 4th, 5:30 p.m. February 18th, 5:30 p.m. March 4th, 5:30 p.m. March 18th, 5:30 p.m. March 21st, 11:00 a.m. April 8th, 5:30 p.m. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. Uh, starting Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, um, as most of you know, uh, this past weekend was the Baltimore Running Festival. I love running. I love doing the festival every year. Uh, but this was a, a pretty special one. I want to note, uh, at the start line, I saw, uh, Councilmember Parker. And he both, we both ran half marathon, um, saw each other up until around mile 10. And he caught up again at the, at the finish line. It was good to welcome him at the finish line after he finished. No, I was just saying, oh, so, but no.
What is it, Brandon's?
No, no, no. He left. Anyway, but, but what I want to also say though is, running is also a metaphor for life. It tells us a lot. And what I want to talk about is also our colleagues I saw along the way. So as I was getting through, after I'd come around mile 10, wound up seeing Councilmember Ramos. And she's cheering, and that gave me a little bit of energy. And so it started picking up a little bit. And as I passed Councilmember Ramos, then I hear Bullock, and it's Dorsey. It's Councilmember Dorsey, and so he's on his bike. He rides up besides me. He takes what's now an iconic picture of running through the city. But I say that to say that it's important for us to support each other's colleagues.
That's right.
Um, to also, uh, celebrate each other as colleagues, push each other along the way. And I know over the past week, um, there's been conversation around us being colleagues, how we treat one another. But I think this is an example of what we can do, um, a- as a unit. So again, I can encourage that behavior. I'm thankful for my colleagues of being out there. It was a fun time. Those who haven't done it, I encourage you to do it sometime.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullock. Since Councilmember Parker was not here to defend his honor, we, uh, we'll hear from him later. Uh, Councilmember Torrance. Oh. Oh, yeah. You know what? You're absolutely right. Uh, I believe Glover came in second in the overall. Uh, thank you to Councilman Glover for his efforts in the race. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on a summer note, I want to just lift up the name of Wes Henson, Captain Defense, who is one of our super fans for the Baltimore Ravens. Um, on a personal note, he is the uncle of a personal mentor of mine, Valerie Henson. Um, Wes was a super fan, um, who would cheer on the Ravens even when we were fair weather fans sometimes and want to fire people, you know? But cheerfully, he participated in so many events. Um, often people saw him at the games, but he was there when young people who were experiencing hardship through cancer and other diseases needed, uh, just to cheer me up. But in addition to that, he went to senior homes and other places to actually give cheer. Um, he took it as his personal role, and I think that we should honor him as his services will be tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance, could you say his last name one more time?
Wes, Wes Henson.
Henson. Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I just want to, uh, publicly announce the, uh, task force on, uh, the Sisson Street, um, transfer station. Uh, the task force meets this evening after this meeting. Uh, for the first meeting, it will be an organizational meeting. And then further meetings will be announced, uh, and we will have public testimony, um, as well at, at subsequent meetings. Uh, and the membership, um, I'll be putting a lot of the updates and things on our website. So, and I know the mayor will also be doing that, um, as well. And just want to note that, uh, sort of everything's on the table. We're not just looking at one site. We're looking at a lot of different sites. We may even be looking at keeping it there. So, uh, at the, again, we start tonight, um, right after this, this meeting on the first meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, for the last 10 months or so, I've been, uh, a part of this amazing group of people, uh, in a, in a program called The Leadership. Um, over the last couple of years, a couple of my colleagues have participated in this wonderful program. Um, but I think my, my cohort did it best, the 2025 cohort. Um, and this, this program is, is, is awesome, uh, i- if only, uh, for a couple of reasons. It pulls together leaders from the private sector, the public sector, from the nonprofit sector, uh, across the city, and puts them in a room and talks about the hard issues facing the city and how folks can work together to understand those issues first and then eventually tackle them. Um, I want to take a moment for the folks that are still here, cause it's been a long meeting. Um, I told them they would get some fireworks. Uh, if you guys could stand up, I want to acknowledge you guys. Um, so this is the 2025 class of The Leadership. Appreciate you guys coming out. The, the, not the best class ever, but the greatest class ever. We, we officially donned that. Um, The Leadership is, um, accepting applications exactly two weeks from today. Uh, will be the deadline for folks interested in the program. I highly, highly, highly recommend it. It's something that I've considered for a while and finally actually went through the program this year. Um, it's been truly phenomenal. I've made some incredible friends and I, I really, um, hate the prospect that we are about to finish soon. Uh, it's incredible how much we've gone through and how much we've seen. Um, I highly recommend for my colleagues that have not gone through the program to consider applying. You have two weeks till today, uh, November 3rd At Midnight is the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. Thank you to The Leadership. Want to also recognize Carolyn Blakeney, who led, uh, Council President Jack Young's staff. Uh, thank you for rejoining this chamber. It's good to see you. All right. Other announcements, hearing and seeing none. I will ask for a moment of silence for Wes Henson. Thank you. Tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Bullock of the 9th District. Councilmember, the floor is yours. All right. You have to elevate me again?
Yeah.
Okay, well, elevate me. I don't feel elevated just yet. All right. All right. That's great. Don't y'all leave. You see? They see you up there. Well, you'll like this one, Dorsey, but. Hey, man, come on. You like it, you like it, you like it. All right. Can we see now? All right, all right, all right. Let's go to this. I've shown it before, that's. All right, there we go. All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, I'll be, I'll be brief, there's a lot more here, but let's just get it, get it going. So, we could talk about this district, um, all day and all night, I will say, um, there are a couple of, um, highlights that we can, uh, recognize. I don't know why this is, um, doing that, let's do this. Well, maybe I'll just cut to the highlight, do you want to do that? All right, let's go ahead and do this. Because this is not doing what I wanted to do. Is this still working? I just want to show a video. Let me just try to get to those videos. Yeah, okay, but I want to do this one. You want to do this one first? Yeah. I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that I want to show these videos, but. I mean, I have the person here that I want to actually do, that's why I needed it to work. All right, how about this? I will do, I want to do floor privileges today, and then we'll come back and do the, the showcase, okay? So, I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you something really quickly, and then, I do want to, I do need to show this, though. Okay, so, all right. All right. Sound should be working.
Now, that was the end of the presentation, so you'll get the rest next time, but, the reason why I wanted to do that, um, there are a couple of reasons. One, that, that beautiful sound that you heard was coming from no other than, uh, Ramilia Sabanova, who was actually with us this evening, and she is a world-renowned pianist, classically trained, also, I was thinking about Dorsey in terms of the Peabody Conservatories, has also spent time there, and she is also part of, which you will find out in the future, around the Union Square Sorre, Sorre. So, Union Square is one of our fabulous neighborhoods in the Ninth District, and she's been responsible for helping to cultivate artists and that experience, and it speaks to the diversity of our district and of our city. And as we welcome folks, whether you're from Eastern Europe, or you're from Latin America, or you're from Africa, there is a place for you here in Baltimore, and there's a place for you here in the Ninth District, and so, and so, Mr. President, I did want to, uh, send floor privileges if possible, so we can honor Ramilia for her contributions to music and art here in Baltimore and in the Ninth District.
Floor privileges granted, come on up.
So, I'll, I'll read this, um, and make sure Ramilia gets it, but again, uh, "Being hereby known, the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, being hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers the sincerest congratulations to Ramilia Sabanova in recognition of your artistic contribution to the Union Square Sorre. This entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on this twentieth day of October, twenty twenty-five, signed by Council President Z. Cohen and myself, Councilmember John Bullock, and all the members of the council. We really appreciate you."
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Um, I'm truly honored to receive this recognition. For more than two decades, I've dedicated my life to sharing classical music, art, and culture with communities around the world, and for the past seven years here in Baltimore, and it's been a joy and privilege to contribute to this city's vibrant artistic life. And, uh, on behalf of the Union Square Sorre, as you mentioned, it's a salon concert series that we run in Union Square. I would like to say that, uh, we're very grateful to be recognized, because we work very hard to support local artists and young generation of artists, and we always strive to create a beautiful and meaningful experience, um, for our community. We're very thankful to the city of Baltimore and John Bullock for their continued support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. The next, thank you, Councilmember Bullock, looking forward to hearing part one of this two-part series. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October twenty-seventh at five P. M. There being no further business before this body, this concludes the sixteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council.